All this is, I believe, this number has gone down a bit from previous. I believe previously it had been over eighty thousand, ninety thousand, something like that. So this number is coming down, but it just varies depending on what those services are from year to year and what their needs are. So are there any questions on that?
You know, we got anything on the fire district question? We're still on topic here for your packet here. I got a big question. Under transfer to golf course for renovation, clubhouse seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I didn't know that we had already approved the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I was out there and there are a lot of needs on the golf course as far as rejuvenating the grass, sand traps, parking lot, a lot of other stuff. But the need of a new clubhouse or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair it, to me, and I'm out there all the time, so I do have firsthand knowledge of how important is it to put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And number one, I don't think we can do a lot of it for seven hundred and fifty thousand. But as we move forward to get the budget turned in, I have a question on that. And I guess I have the right to ask that question. Do we need the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there to renovate the golf course? Now, I know we need, I'm all in on the well, one hundred percent. We need to do that well. That's, we gotta get on that water, period. But the clubhouse, walking in, paying your fees, sitting there having a beer after your play, the renovation for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for me is excessive. It's something that's not needed. And I don't, and I think we have to be, you know, we have to be responsible for the amount of money we put in for all that stuff. But the renovation of the clubhouse for seven fifty, I think for any remodel, that size would be in the millions, not in the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars range. So what is, how important is it to put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a remodel or renovation when we have other needs that we can put it to? So that's my question on that. It's here in front of me, so I'm gonna ask the question.
Okay, so yes, that was approved as part of the tentative budget. It can be removed before we go to final, and that would be something that the county commission can direct me to do as a group so that I will remove that amount. I believe that, you know, we did discuss this, and I would invite more discussion from the other county commissioners, or I know that Mike was involved in this particular request, so if you have additional information you'd like to provide to the commission, I'd invite you to do so.
I would really like some input from the rest of the county commission on this particular item. The rest of us all fine, and the water well, I mean, be out front, that needs to be done. But the renovation for seven fifty for the golf course or improvement or remodel, whatever you think of, I would like to hear from the rest of you guys on the board. Do you think that's an important part? Should that stay in the tentative budget or the budget going forward? Or can we move it back another year or two down the road? We've got other stuff to do, but it just really caught my eye big time. And I've talked to the pro and I'm out there every day. I go in and pay my fee, I go check in. I don't need seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in that building that's been there forever. It's, you know, it can be moved back forward. I think on this budget here right now, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Chairman, according to the board discusses that, I just wanted to say, you put it as in, we're doing this instead of these other things. This is the bottom, the greens, the parking lot, like all, the well, all the other things are gonna be addressed and taken care of in this budget. And I haven't heard anything else that's an ask at the golf course beyond what we're already budgeting for. If there's something else, a piece of equipment or something else we need out there to make those greens better, that is a paramount concern. But this is not displacing any of that. Those things are still gonna be addressed, and you were right, this, you said maybe take care of it in a couple of years. Well, and this may be just a transfer into the fund, and then every year we have extra revenues, we can earmark into that fund, and maybe we have to address it in two or three years. But this is just, I just wanted to at least clarify some of these things. This is, you're right, we may not be able to do anything with the seven fifty this year, but we have to start thinking about that plan. And then now it's for the board to discuss whether it even wants to do anything with the clubhouse.
But is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's for the club, just like you, out front and everybody knows it. The seven hundred and fifty is for the golf course, not for the parking lot or all the other stuff. That's just strictly for the golf course, right? The clubhouse, excuse me, I want to get that straight up to you, for the clubhouse. This does not include what you were discussing, the greens and the mowers, whatever else we need or the well. This is strictly, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars I'm looking at, or we're all looking at here, is for the clubhouse specific. Okay, so that being said, I'll just ask some of the questions should we?
My opinion is, I love golf. I think a golf course is, just from a comfort level and mentality of a person coming to visit a town, having a nice golf course gives people a certain sense, even if they don't play, it gives them the sense that this is not a dead place. And I don't think it's out of bounds. I think that you're absolutely right for the people that are using it all the time. We tend to get a little used to certain things. A good example, my recording studio, before I overhauled it, was good enough for me, but from the outside looking in, it was becoming a bit of a man cave. It was not a nice place. I couldn't bring professionals into it. It was just a useful thing for me. But if I actually wanted people to pay big money and want to be in that environment, I had to put the effort into making it a nice professional space. And so, in my mind, my opinion is, what this is about, this isn't about whether or not we need it to function, because sure, the members can continue to use it, they don't care if there's carpet going up over the bar. But if we want to have something we can be proud of, that visitors coming from the outside, that we can have, that we can host guests in, we need to have something that's nice. We need to have something professional. And it's long overdue, and in the time that we're doing well financially, this is the time to take care of those kind of things, without putting us in a bad financial situation, guys, we're doing, we're over nine hundred grand over where we need to be after we pay for this, so I feel like we're not being irresponsible here. You know, unless we want to build a money bin to swim in with all this money, but we, taxpayers are paying the money in, we need to use it to make sure that our amenities, our facilities are managed well, so.
Thank you. Lori, Shayna, welcome your comments about you.
I, actually, I agree with Ian on this. I think that putting the money aside for it, I go back to the years when White Pine County entered into severe financial emergency. We came out of that in two thousand and nine, but we Band-Aid everything. We couldn't do what we needed to do, that we've been doing now, and trying to put monies aside to do what we need to do to, for all the upgrades that are necessary. And I think that this is one of them, putting the money aside. Even after we came out of severe financial emergency, for another five years, we were on probation. So it was actually two thousand and fourteen before we were kind of cut loose from Department of Taxation. So I agree, I think that this should be earmarked, and I agree, it's probably not enough, but it is. It's a man cave out there. I've been out there numerous times. We used to start out there having our, if you can believe it, our annual county Christmas party out there. And I think that we need to play catch-up, and that's one of the things that we need to put some money towards.
Thank you. Shayna?
You know, I kind of agree along that line. You know, as far as the building goes, yeah, it keeps raining off my head. I got an old barn out of my dad's house, it's an old McGill tin grudge, keeps raining off my head, but it doesn't look very good. And I think that the golf course has been a stepchild of this county for a long time. It's always the first thing that we cut and the last thing that we put funding towards. And when I've gone to events in other communities, the showcase in a lot of communities is their clubhouse. They have a cocktail party, they have it in the clubhouse because you come to that place, it's the nicest building, it's where they really show you what they're trying to do. And right now, I mean, good hell, when we got that building seventy years ago, it was a building that was deemed surplus, and it wasn't even usable as an archery barn anymore. And then it got transferred over and made into a clubhouse. It's time to look at something new, and granted, seven fifty isn't gonna do it. But if we put seven fifty this year, and as long as things continue, the thing that's important to understand is, we've got, we're dealing with, with net proceeds from mine is not gonna be here forever. Well, once that mine's gone, having a great golf course with a beautiful building is more important than it is now, because we're gonna be looking to draw people to this community in any way we can. And so I think in looking to the future, I think we put this seven fifty in, and next year we put another seven fifty, and in a few years, we've got enough money to pay cash and put up something that is a really developable resource.
Yeah, we've talked about putting, there's county property around there, we've talked about putting, you know, patio homes, nice townhouses. I think that, you know, looking at the big picture, I think that we should start doing that in general.
Travis is on the phone.
Travis, you got anything to say?
Yeah, I tend to agree along the lines of Shane, Ian, and Lori. You know, I think it's either start this process now or don't have a golf course, and I think I would rather, you know, put the money up there and start doing something about it than the alternative, which doesn't serve anybody, so I'm good with this.
Chairman, I wanted to give you a little update on it. I would reach out to Core and LCA to give some general budget and schematics on what something like that would look like, and what's really shocking even to them is that it came back around five million dollars. So it's gonna, you know, there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a process on how we can pay for something, how it can scale back, how can we change materials, what that's even gonna look like. We can put this on another agenda item, and I can bring some schematics in and show the board kind of what's cooking. And what, the positive side of that is, it's really neat looking. Flat panel lever roof with concrete walls and glass looking up over the course, a glass enclosed walkable pro shop, a whole dining area, upgraded kitchen, walk-in cooler, virtual, the, what do you call that, the virtual golf, indoor golf, so that you can play during the winter for some of the members, and that's pretty inexpensive actually to add to that building. We're just trying to read life into that, that area out there. There's a lot of people that talk about how they used to go out there, or how, you know, and what I'd like to see is how much of our community and visitors would have lunch or go out for drinks or dinner, or take more time afterwards and shop at the pro shop or hang out. Have another facility that is adult-centered, and it's family-centered too, but you know what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm glad I brought this up, I really am. I listened to all the commissioners, it feels like they kind of want to do that. I want to ask one question. If we earmark seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for down the road as we grow a year or two, whatever added to it, I'm okay with that. Can we, is there an avenue in there where if we decide in a year or two, we don't have the money, we can't build this, can that money come back? Can we go pull that money out of that earmarked fund back to the general fund? Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
You can.
Okay.
What will happen is, because there are a number of these large transfers that have been proposed for the upcoming fiscal year, and so what we will be doing is, we will be doing what's called a commitment of fund balance, so that if the project is not completed, that money will sit in the fund and it will show legally that it's been committed for this purpose only, such as we have been sending money from the general fund into capital improvements specific to renovation of the historic courthouse. At the end of this year, on the financial statements, you will see a commitment in capital improvements fund for the courthouse of that fund balance, so that it's known that that's what that money is for, not only by the commission, but the public when they're looking at our financial statements. Okay, you have this many million dollars, this much is for it, and we'll do the same thing with the golf course. At the end of this year, I believe we'll have, I think we're transferring two hundred thousand dollars this year for the golf course well. That will be committed, because we won't necessarily spend a hundred percent of that money, so the balance that we don't spend between now and June thirtieth will be a commitment of fund balance in next year's expenditures for specifically the well. So it can't be just, we're putting this money over there and then it gets used for something else. There's a process to uncommit those funds and determine where they will go.
Okay, we have, does anybody else have anything on this agenda going forward besides what I brought up on the golf course? And then I'm gonna ask the VA, can we vote on this one thing to proceed with the item as presented, or do we have to vote on the whole tentative budget?
So it would be on a tentative budget, but you could change or reaffirm the commitment to the golf course or clubhouse in that vote.
Can I ask the commissioners to reaffirm that they want to keep it or want to proceed the other way?
Yeah, I mean, you don't have, again, you don't have to vote. If you don't, if the feeling of the board is, there's no changes, you don't have to have a vote, you can. And if you wanted to change it, you could vote to affirm the new tentative budget with this change, or vote to keep it the same.
And I'm just gonna offer some clarification, because the tentative budget is the tentative budget and cannot be changed at this point. So what we're looking at here is, how are we gonna change it between tentative and final? And what I'm asking for is your direction as to what you want me to keep in. I'm telling you the changes I foresee that we will need to make based on actual data as it's coming in and becoming available. But yeah, if you want to go ahead and give me direction, that's fine. Part of the process for your next meeting is you will adopt the final. Part of my job is to present to you and the public a list of all of the changes that will occur between the tentative and the final, so we're very clear on what is being adopted and what has been changed since I posted the tentative budgets.
Okay, then, just to speed it up and to make it right, after listening to the rest of the commission, and that's the right way to do it, and I have a feeling that they are okay with this budget as presented, the tentative, and I don't need to bring up any more about it, you heard what I feel about it, and I don't think we need to vote on it, but the rest of the commission's put there and put in. To stay with the tentative budget as presented, as you brought to us, and I'm good with that, and that's why I asked, do we have to vote on it? So we don't, we just stay as that, we just stay in what it is, as presented. Is that okay?
And may I just please comment on a few more funds that I feel will need to update? Okay, the next one would be the SB seventy-four fund, which is for public safety and judicial infrastructure. One of the things that I'm having difficulty with because of supply chain issues is part of it, the plan for the new courthouse is to have a storage facility out back, a large storage facility, so the clerk's office didn't have to run up to the cave back up the canyon here as frequently. However, because of the timing of everything, we may not be able to get this in within the USDA loan. However, we do have adequate fund balance within this SB seventy-four fund, so I want to go ahead and budget for that out of the fund balance from next year so that we can go ahead and proceed with that if I can get it done timely, and I've been working with USDA on this, and what they can do as far as allowing that as an anticipated payment and that type of thing. But if not, I would like to have that budgeted, and I'm estimating somewhere between four and five hundred thousand dollars for that, there is adequate fund balance to do that and still have that required set aside for the USDA loan. The other one that I would like to discuss is the Community Services Building that involves SB seventy-four. I believe that is adequately funded. It involves capital improvements. I believe that is adequately funded. The one that I believe that is, our funds, that is adequately funded. The one that I need to look at one more time is Indigent, a social services budget. I believe we're gonna have to add some to that. There is adequate fund balance to do that, but I believe I have to take that number up a bit just to make sure we have adequate budgeted. I did talk to the Department of Taxation, because I was very concerned, we have to go up four and a half percent or something in that budget every year. And they said, so if I budget a million dollars for a one-time project, I can't go up by another four and a half percent on top of what I'm doing, it'll bankrupt the fund. And they said, no, if I'm using fund balance to do a one-time project, it's not the four and a half percent increase is not applied to that amount. So we're good. It's only the operating expense, so we'd be good in that direction. But I am anticipating, I do need to increase that budget just a bit as well. And those are the changes I have for you today. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I'm gonna, we're still on item two, including, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve item two, the discussion of possible action for the revenues and expenses for FY twenty-three. Am I right?
Yes.
So that's what I'm gonna ask for, a motion to approve item two, which is to approve the revenues and expenses for FY twenty-three as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. Okay, we're gonna move on to page two, item three, discussion for possible action, the approval of monthly financial reports for April twenty-two. Elizabeth?
Yep, and those are in your backup documentation in their normal format. I'm happy to answer any questions if you may have that.
Any questions, Elizabeth, on that? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the monthly financials.
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Shane?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
None? Pass unanimous. Item four, is discussion for possible action, approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund or adjust for approved grant slash agency funds. Elizabeth?
That is in your backup, there is just your end of year balancing between line items, and I would ask that you approve as presented.
Okay, motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. Item five, is discussion for possible action, the approval of minutes from the fire commission meeting, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there any additions, subtractions, or corrections? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None? Pass unanimous? Okay, that finishes the special meeting between the fire commission and the commission. At this time, we'll call for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? Anyone on the phone with what we've discussed here so far? Mike? Hearing none? Anyone in the audience? George, if you'd like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You missed the public comment at the beginning, just so you can like that out.
Oh, I did.
Mr. Chairman, on several occasions, I've brought to your attention and have not received any response in regard to the stop sign located on the corner of Avenue D and Highway ninety-three that was knocked down for more than a month, finally put up again, slinging to the west. You got a problem there. I'm still waiting for your written response in regards to the ingress egress we're having to be access Highway ninety-three. The ingress egress does not meet minimum street standards, nor is there proper ADA compliance for the handicap. I'm gonna present that again. Mr. Chairman, on your item two, in regards to the revenues budgeted, I've yet to see anything where you've created a victim's fund. You need to address other considerations than those that include only your friends. Seven hundred and fifty thousand for a golf course when you're not bringing in the business? These people better get a grip. Don't have it this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Is there any public comment on the phone? Anyone else in the building? Hearing none and seeing none? We're gonna move on, and we're gonna go to page three, and we have a nine fifteen timed item, and that's the road commission. Item one, is discussion for possible action, the approval of the road maintenance agreement between White Pine County and KG Mining, Bald Mountain Incorporated. Bill Calderwood, Bill?
You want to table this, Mike, so we can get the right-of-way request that? Yeah, just for the public and for Bald that they're listening, Bald Mountain, Ken Ross, there are some other issues that kind of came up with the BLM on a road up in their neck of the woods that they want to have, Ken Ross wants a right-of-way on, but we're just trying to work it out right now. So I think this agreement should have provisions that cover how we're gonna work that road out specifically, and I think there's definitely a path to get this all resolved, we just have to communicate with them. I sent them an email early this week, and I haven't heard back from them yet, so we'll get ahold of them this week, early next week, and try to have this on the next agenda for approval, if we can make some progress with their BLM application, see if we can get it amended.
So should I ask for a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Okay, motion by Lori to table?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Pass unanimous? Okay, we're on item two under road commission. Item two is discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three road commission meeting. Any additions, corrections, or subtractions? Hearing none? I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Pass unanimous? Okay, we're still on page three. We're a little behind, we have the nine thirty timed item for natural resources. Item one, is discussion, information only regarding the White Pine County Natural Resource and Public Lands issues tracking list. Jeremy? Jeremy, you on the phone?
Hi, I'm Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, sorry about the lack of video going, joining you from the road today. Just a quick update on a couple of items, Chairman. Mr. Weble mentioned Bald Mountain in addition to the Juniper project, the road realignment for County Road one thousand. Because BLM's involved with processing that right-of-way, I've added this to our ongoing tracking list and will provide support to the county manager and Mr. Calderwood is appropriate. We got an update last night from Endow on Cape Lake Dam. They were hoping to go to bid last month on the dam reconstruction. Unfortunately, that's been delayed pending permitting from EWR and the Army Corps of Engineers, so they're hoping permitting this summer. And again, it would be, they were hoping to get work done this summer, but it's gonna be a two-year process at minimum, it sounds like. The cross-tie five hundred TB transmission line, this is the one coming in from the east, from Utah, crossing north of Ely and then over to Robinson Substation. We've been a cooperating agency on this, and we've provided some input through our non-disclosure agreement, but the public scoping period is open, and as you'll see, there's a comment period due May thirty-first, and virtual meetings next week. I will plan on taking in a virtual meeting next week and providing or preparing a comment for you all to review on your next agenda. White Pine Pump Storage, we're gonna discuss in our next agenda, but I would just say that I really appreciate R Plus Energy coming to the Natural Resource Advisory Committee last night. It was a very robust discussion, a lot of attendance, some good back and forth. I think R Plus has a better handle on some of the concerns and questions that the committee and the community have had, and I think the committee has a much better understanding of some of the details of the project. And I think everyone realizes that interfaces such as that are gonna be good and critical going forward so that we end up with a good project. Outside of that, I didn't have much other than to thank Commissioner Carson for helping me out at the last month's presentation to the Nevada Legislative Committee on Public Lands. I think it was well-received, they certainly got a lot of information, including a good history lesson on White Pine County from Commissioner Carson, as well as an update on all the things that we track and talk about on a monthly basis. With that, Chairman, unless there's any questions, that's my report for today.
You got anything from Jeremy? Thank you, Lori, for your help with Jeremy on that.
Thank you, Jeremy, for your help with Lori.
Okay, that was a discussion, information only on item one. Item two is discussion for possible action, the approval of a document-specific comment table to the White Pine Pump Storage Project's Federal Energy Regulatory Commission draft license application. Wow, okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make my standard disclosure with pump storage. I know all my parents have any property or any dealings with R Plus as stated in previous meetings and shown on the map, and therefore I will be voting and commenting on this item.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Okay, the item is open. Is anybody, Jeremy, you got anything to say on this item, on the document?
Yeah, just briefly, Chairman, again, we had a good discussion at the Natural Resource Advisory Committee meeting last night. The packet that's before you and your package or agenda today was presented to them, and they recommended approval at today's hearing with three updates. One was on page two, the first entry under exhibit B where it talks about analyzing alternative sighting, and they asked if any other mountain ranges were considered, particularly anything near the Robinson Substation. So that was one recommended addition. On page eight, second to last row, where it talks about effects on water resources, they requested adding a line that said, if impacts are anticipated, then a mitigation plan should be developed. Just a note, there was a lot of robust discussion around moving forward with the hydrogeology study. And I think R Plus heard that and, and will move forward with that when there's enough detail available to do so. And then on page ten, second row, where we talked about wildlife and wildlife habitat, they recommended in addition to our entry that simply says, "And develop a mitigation plan for affected wildlife species." Outside of that, Chairman, I didn't have any further updates or comments